Here.
Chair Comont.
I'm here.
Mr. Stevens.
Here.
Mr. Krawinski.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
All right. Thanks. Good to see everybody again. Uh, oh, maybe we can just add Mr. Polinsky to the roll call.
Yeah.
Once you get settled, don't rush.
I'll give you my mind.
And Mr. Polinsky.
Here.
Thank you. We still have a quorum.
All right. Terrific. Thank you. Um, okay. And then can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to adopt the meeting agenda.
And is there a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. New speaker series tonight. Um, so the next item is the receipt of petitions. Uh, Mr. Trainer, do we have any written correspondence?
No, Madam Chair. I did not receive any written petitions for the planning commission, and I also did not receive any speaker slips for in-person comment. But if there is anyone in the audience I would like to speak tonight, please make yourself known.
Would anybody like to speak tonight? Okay. All right. Then I think we can move on to our action items. Uh, the first action item is the EKONIZE site plan final action. Uh, Mr. Fuller, would you like to introduce the item?
Yes, uh, this is a site plan. Uh, this is up for, uh, final approval tonight. Uh, you've seen this before in, um, several work sessions and, um, it's in final form and there's a few administrative things that, that we're happy to wrap up. Uh, very basic there listed in the report. Um, and then I have Jeff Hollerin as the project planner. He'll be presenting tonight.
Okay, great. Welcome, Mr. Hollerin.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Chair Comont, members of the planning commission. I'm Jeff Hollerin with the planning staff. Uh, the planning commission has requested to hold a public hearing on a site plan application for the proposed EKONIZE closet showroom and office. Uh, this is the planning commission's third meeting to review the application. Uh, staff has, has recently completed a review of the third submission of, uh, the, all of the application materials and transmitted staff review comments to the applicant, uh, last week on April seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, remaining comments are limited to the clarification of various pre and post development stormwater comments, uh, the review of the sanitary main tie-in and surrounding soil, as well as a request to adjust the proposed inner, uh, the condition at the proposed intersection with West Broad Street. Uh, for some background on the project, uh, the applicant proposes to demolish the existing building at the corner of West Broad Street and Spring Street. Uh, the applicant will then, uh, construct a new four-story all-commercial building totaling eleven thousand five hundred and forty-seven square feet in size. Once constructed, the applicant will relocate from their current location at seven oh three Park Avenue to the new building. Uh, the new building is to serve as a showroom and office for EKONIZE closet with a limited offering of co-working and conference room space on the basement level. Uh, the application also comes with a request for five waivers. Uh, first, there's a waiver for, uh, the perimeter parking lot landscaping adjacent to abutting properties, uh, along the eastern, uh, eastern boundary. Uh, second, there's a waiver request for off-street parking reduction of thirty-nine percent, including a loading space. Number three, uh, a waiver of rear yard setback requirement when adjoining an R district. Number four, a, uh, waiver of requirement for no vehicular entrance between, within one hundred feet of an R district. And number five, there's a waiver of interior parking lot landscaping requirements. Uh, lines ninety-four through two hundred and twelve includes all of, uh, staff's analysis of the proposed application against the comprehensive plan, West Broad Street Small Area Plan, zoning code, and streetscape standards. In summary, staff finds that the proposed application will help towards achieving many of the goals outlined in those plans, specifically those that encourage a well-designed and walkable transition between commercial and residential districts. Uh, lines two fourteen to two eighty-six of the staff report, uh, includes all of the waiver requests, justifications, and staff's analysis and recommendations. Uh, the, the parking reduction request of thirty-nine percent, uh, percent has been, uh, supported by a transportation demand management plan, uh, shown within the, uh, cover sheets of the site plan document. Of note is that the building's eleven thousand five hundred and forty-seven square feet is not indicative of the number of staff and patrons that will be on the site at any given time. Uh, the bottom of the report shows the application's timeline up until tonight's public hearing, uh, which was noticed to the public, uh, and only received questions to clarify the uses, uh, and the parking reduction request at the site. Uh, staff responded to these questions and provided links to previous work sessions on the project. Uh, that's it for the staff report. Uh, we do have Zach Asper, uh, who's a project architect here in the building, uh, and then I'll stick around for questions. Thank you.
Okay, great. Uh, does the applicant want to speak? You're not required to, but...
Um, yeah.
If you, if you do, can you come to, to the mic?
Uh, yeah, sure. I can just wait for the bear to school.
Great.
Thank you.
There, there hasn't been a whole lot of changes since the last time we, we talked, but just wanted to show you the few changes that were made. So, um, uh, so yeah, this is the design. Um, overall, the, the building design actually hasn't changed. If you could go to the next slide, um, the site, next slide, please. It's really just the parking in the back, and I think actually the next slide will show it a little bit better. Um, I think the last time that we met with you all, we were, uh, assuming we were gonna have eighteen onsite spot, parking spots and two on the street. We're still, um, carving out space for the two on the street, but we had to reduce the onsite spots by two. Um, I believe that was tied to some staff comments about access to the trash, uh, container in back. So, um, we had a, you can see the last two spots on the right there, um, are no parking spots, and that's just to allow better access for the trash truck to come and pick up trash and recycling. Um, but other than that, that was, that was the only changes. So yeah, we're, um, you know, thankful for this process and look forward to hopefully getting pro, final approval from you all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I'll open it up to my fellow commissioners. Any questions or comments? I know we've seen this a few times. Mr. Duncan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, before you run away from the two parking spots on the street, remind me again what happens if somebody who's, you know, patronizing the coin shop or one of the other stores in your new neighborhood want to park in one of those spots next to your building on the street? Is that gonna be allowed?
That is allowed, yeah. That, that parking's not reserved for EKONIZE. Um, it is not counted towards our calculation, but it is something that, um, is not currently there that we're gonna be kinda highlighting as parking spots. But yes, anyone can park there.
Okay. And Mr. Holland, you said that, uh, the public comment or questions had been fairly minimal and focused on a couple of questions you were able to respond to. Is that right?
Yeah. So we did our Apon noticing, uh, ten-day Apon noticing, and the only comment that I received was not really a comment. It was more just clarification questions of what's, uh, what are the uses in the building, um, and, uh, also, uh, if, if staff believes that it's going to be, uh, enough parking for their use.
Okay. Well, that's good. Um, I remember when we had the proposal for a condominium, small condominium building at that general location, and there was much more public input. Folks on the street were not quite so happy with that. So for whatever reason, either folks are more confident that we can do a development nicely, or maybe the nature of this particular, um, application seems less, less likely to be a burden on parking or whatever, but it's good news, whatever it is. Uh, final question. So the back part of the lot is residentially zoned now, and that's gonna get folded in with the part that's commercially zoned now, right?
Yes.
So here's a question that somebody can school me on. If, if we give you the entitlement to go ahead with this project and somehow, you know, somebody comes to you, uh, next week and says, gee, now that you've got this entitlement for development that takes in, you know, the entire length of the property all the way down to the single-family house that's there, uh, we wanna buy it from you and do something else. What, what would our position be? Does the, the, the clock start all over again with a new development, or does the residentially zoned area that we're folding into this with this action, you know, carry with the, the property after, after these folks are using it?
So just to answer that, the, this site plan, uh, when approved would, would then be able to be used by this applicant, or if they were to sell it to another. Um, if somebody wanted, was to buy the property before this was built, then, um, they would have to submit a new site plan for what they plan to do with that. The residential zoning, there is, um, business and residential zoning, that is not changing and it's not being rezoned.
Mm-hmm.
So that will remain there. So if a new applicant were to come in, then we would look at the code and, and how that split zoning on that property, which is remaining with the site plan.
Okay.
Uh, would, would be addressed with whether a proposal came in.
Okay. Others here probably were aware of that. I just wanted to make sure that I understood that. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
I'll just make a follow-up with that question.
Go ahead.
Um, since, since we brought up the issue of the split zoning, right, we're not, it's not a rezoning. Yeah, that was gonna be something, I mean, the staff is well aware of that. Um, I guess the question is, and I don't know if we touched on this at some of the work sessions, but, I mean, just so also, folks, anyone listening, that the use isn't gonna be in the business zone. The only part that's in the residential zone is part of the parking area, and our code, can staff confirm, our code allows a part of a commercial parking lot to extend into the R one A?
That is correct.
Right.
And, and we looked at that early on before the applicant filed anything formally with the zoning administrator. So we sorted that out because of the split zoning. So you are correct in the statement you made. Yes.
Yeah. Split zoning is always a tricky thing because technically, you know, the rules inside only apply within the zone, you know? And then when you have a split-zone lot, unless the code makes certain allowances, um, so they could not, not that they ever proposed to do this, but they couldn't have the building extend over until the R one A. It's not permitted. Um, so to your point, uh, Mr. Duncan, you're right. We're not rezoning the property, so it'll remain split-zoned, um, at least for now, and perhaps for a long time if this is, if this is built, um, since, yeah, this pretty much locked that in for, for the foreseeable future. Uh, just another question, um, also about parking, just for staff, um, I'm interested to get a little bit more elaboration from staff where you talk about, I wasn't clear if you were making a recommendation, um, or, oh, starting on line two ninety-four, where you say, I'll just read what you wrote. Due to the proposed parking reduction, staff and the planning commission may also consider attaching conditions to any such waiver or modification to assure that the results of the waiver or modification are applicable for this use only, and that future uses of the site would need to reapply for a parking reduction. Um, so one, I think we should debate that, but I also, in light of like, what we just approved, um, or I think the council approved it, for the, you know, the changes to the rules for parking and for small uses, I don't know, that would apply. This is a new building, so that wouldn't apply, right? Like, is there any overlap with what we just approved, the change to the code related to parking, um, and what their-
In existing buildings?
Yeah, that was only for existing buildings. I forgot where we landed on that. I know we went back and forth on, on that, but could you just confirm that? That, that code change doesn't, is not applicable here at all?
It's not.
Right. Now, as far, so then to my original question, um, are you recommending that the commission do that? Does, would staff, is staff recommending that we put a condition that limits the parking reduction specifically to this use?
Um, I guess it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a recommendation. It's just more so of informing the planning commission that that is a, something that they can do.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, I think this kinda goes a little bit with, uh, Mr. Duncan's question as well. You know, uh, the, the issue that we're having here is that, uh, the, the, uh, square footage of the building is, is, is making it so that there's much more parking that is required. Um, but this use does not require that much parking.
Right.
Now, future uses may, depending on what it is. So, um, staff is just making sure that the planning commission knows that they can, um, they can put a condition on the waiver that this only goes for this use, and that we'll have to, uh, come back to the table when it's a new use, um, to talk about parking again.
I, I had asked staff to put this in as, as an awareness thing. So as you're granting a waiver for parking, there is the opportunity to put conditions that you would feel appropriate. So I, I, it's just a reminder that I wanted in all the staff reports so you know you have that authority to add some condition i- if, if the need were to arise and stuff.
Right.
Thank you.
So yes, I guess the commission should, we should probably deliberate on that point. Um, you know, if we, if we're inclined to grant the waiver, do we wanna put any, any conditions on that? And so that's something that, it's worth, you know, it's worth considering. It may be, another use might generate a lot more parking. Um, it could be a very different type of office or use that would go in there, but, but we can talk about it. I don't know how folks feel about putting that type of restriction on it. Um, but just wanted to see if staff was making a recommendation. Sounds like they're just kind of, they're neutral on it, but they're telling us we can, we can do it. So, all right. Thanks for that.
Uh, any other thoughts before we maybe discuss Mr. Krasner's question? No? Uh, any thoughts on, uh, conditioning the, the parking reduction?
Guess I would be okay if we wanted to say it's, you know, it's conditioned on, uh, this use. Um, just to make it clear that if they were to sell the property to somebody else who came up with a different use for that space, that, uh, it could lead to a different, uh, conclusion as far as, uh, parking is concerned.
I guess my question would be for someone relatively new to this particular process. Is this like, I understand the authority exists within the planning commission, but is this type of thing done, is there precedent for attaching this kind of waiver in any of the Falls Church?
I think we've attached conditions to other different site plan waivers.
So it wouldn't be setting some new precedent?
Not necessarily. I mean, I think that, I think the issue comes down to whether or not, you know, we feel that, you know, if we're, if we're inclined to support the waiver and we feel it's really predicated on the particular operational characteristics of EKONIZE, um, and that if another completely different tenant was to come in, um, that, you know, we might not support it. Maybe staff could also elaborate on what would be the mechanism for a, a new tenant to get a parking reduction if they're not applying a site plan? What would be the, who would grant that? I mean, what's the, because we're, we're hearing this now because it's a site plan waiver, but if this was built, they get it. We say, okay, new tenant doesn't, needs to reapply for a parking reduction. What's the process for that?
Yeah. In terms of, if you were to have a different use, I would go through the zoning administrator. In this case, the, the waiver, uh, would be, uh, in the system and kinda flagged like a variance almost.
Right.
And so at that point, uh, it would be a, a site plan amendment.
It would have to be, okay.
For the waivers. It would come back to you, um, for, you know, the original proving authority. So.
As a site plan amendment. I wasn't sure if there was any other mechanism to, for parking reduction.
Just to answer the, your earlier question, this ability to, um, uh, grant waivers to, um, parking in the site plan process is, is relatively new. It was a code change a couple of years ago. So we've had a few site plans, mostly townhouses and the D one and so forth. So we haven't really utilized it. Uh, but the idea is, I just wanted you to be aware that that authority does exist if you feel the need, that there need to be a condition. So to answer your question, we haven't actually put a condition on parking to date. We get TDMs with it now, um, and then, you know, we've, you know, granted the waivers to date without any conditions. So, yeah, this would be the first time if we were to attach one. But, um, as I described, that's how we would handle it in the future. So it's a site plan amendment if a new use were to try and use it.
Regardless of whether or not we sort of attach that condition, that site plan amendment?
Um, without that condition, um, the, the zoning administrator would look at the use and look at the parking, but, you know, wouldn't necessarily, um, come back to you. Uh, it would be a decision on their part based on the use and the demand.
Actually, not to throw, not to throw another layer of complexity on-
I know, but maybe nothing will.
With the, with the state code.
Yeah.
Change that takes away site plan reviewing authority. Um, sounds like if it did come back, it would come back to the staff. It'd be, you know-
Yeah.
It would be whoever the designated aide will be.
Staff becomes the main, you know, reviewer and approver of a-
Right.
Decider case, yeah.
Whether it's the director of planning or the director or whatever, you know, it would, it would fall on that person, um, who reviews the site plan. So, um, just another, I mean, the only, I think the only significance there is that if people are concerned about that we'd be putting an onerous restriction that would require like another public hearing and a site plan, it sounds like with the state code change, we'll talk about that, I guess, at the end of the meeting, but, you know, that may, that may not be the case in the future. Um, it would be an administrative, um, process to, to do it. So maybe that makes it a little bit less, you know, onerous of somebody, you know, if we're, if we're worried about trying to balance, you know, concerns about a new use creating a parking problem, but not wanting to kind of overburden the property. Um, so anyhow, just food for thought, but that may, yeah, that actually maybe in some ways makes me more inclined to wanna put, put the restriction in place because the remedy in the future would be, you know, staff-level process.
Mm-hmm. Any other thoughts on, uh, waiver, no waiver? Mr. Duncan?
What does the applicant think about us putting that condition on?
Oh, sorry. Not waiver, no waiver. Condition, no condition.
Yeah. Do you have any opinions on it?
Um, you know, as a representative of my, my client, who's the property owner, I can see how, um, that could potentially limit him in the future, maybe. Uh, it's hard for me to, you know, I don't have a, uh, looking ball to see into the future, but, um, so I, I would prefer not to have that waiver put on, but at the same time, I'm not, I'm not gonna be opposed to it. You know, I'd rather have the, uh, site plan get approved today than have the waiver for the, I forget the proper nomenclature there, but yeah.
Any other, any other thoughts, Mr. Polinsky? Or, oh, okay.
Uh, I would just say, um, it sounds like it would be prudent to have that condition put on it based on the size of the building, um, and potential future use of the building.
Yeah.
So, um, if there's no significant pushback from the owner, I would probably suggest it might be a prudent thing to do.
Mr. Stevens?
I, I guess the motivation is just, you know, the protection of the neighborhood in case, uh, situation changes. Um, and, uh, you know, like we hypothesized, if some type of a use comes in there that generates lots of traffic and lots of parking on the street, that, you know, obviously folks aren't gonna be very happy about that. So having some way to address that sounds like a prudent thing to do.
Okay. And Mr. Duncan? Mr. Polinsky?
I did come up with an idea. I think, uh, I also like the idea of setting that precedent, especially with any new buildings that come into that area, um, that this particular applicant did it this way, but that was a special review. We made a decision based on that. Different reviews don't necessarily get that precedent, that you can reduce parking and still get it in because you, as Mr. Stevens pointed out, you end up, different, different building, different use case ends up invading or emerging or expanding into residential parking.
Okay.
There's a challenge.
Chair Comont, maybe just a quick refresher on, um, so there's, there's two administrative avenues for a parking reduction. Um, there's the one that the planning commission approved, which is there's certain conditions that an applicant can meet when moving into an existing commercial building. Um, that can apply for the first, uh, one thousand two hundred square feet, um, of the use to be removed from parking considerations, calculations. Um, there's, you know, additional, um, requirements to be able to be eligible for that, but that is a, you know, a, um, an administrative review that, um, that's done at the, the time of certificate of occupancy. So when someone comes in proposing a new use, um, that could automatically be checked at the staff level. There's a second, um, avenue where if, uh, that doesn't apply, uh, then an applicant can, uh, petition the zoning administrator specifically and, and there's, um, provide some specific information, basically submitting a TDM plan for the zoning administrator, and that's a more of, um, um, not, not as kind of, uh, straightforward, but is more of a conversation, I'd say, with the zoning. There's more discretion for the zoning administrator to, uh, recommend the request being made, um, on condition that they supply, uh, the appropriate information.
Okay. And would us, um, if we were to place a, um, condition on this waiver, would that tie up the zoning administrator's hands in that second scenario?
Uh, it, it could. I'm, I'm not exactly sure how that would play into the processes, um, that are available, you know, with, when, when a waiver or, um, condition is, is not put on the site plan. Um, I, I'm not sure, to be honest. Um, so the, the conditions here are just, uh, when a property's changing use, um, without consideration of other, uh, conditions put on it previously.
Did you have another comment, Mr. Fuller?
Yeah, I would say, I mean, what I stated before, the condition added to the waiver, it's really, uh, technically a modification to the parking requirements per the code. Um, that would carry with the, the plan, and, and so another use that had a higher demand of parking needing more than that, uh, would have to come back in and modify the parking again and justify that that use, I mean, an extreme example would be, you know, a, a restaurant coming in.
Right.
Trying to occupy versus an office building, which would be probably appropriate. So, but anyway, yeah.
Right. Okay. I'm hearing general support for the idea of including a, a, a condition. Is that right, Mr.?
Trying to occupy versus an office building, which would be probably appropriate, so.
Right.
But anyway, yeah.
Right. Okay. I'm hearing general support for the idea of including a, a condition. Is that right, Mr. Duncan? Or, you, I think I saw a thumbs up from you. Okay.
Yes.
All right. Um, I'm, I'm fine with that. I mean, I, I, I am, I'm a little ambivalent about it, and in general, I think I would prefer to not, not have it, but, um, but I'll go with the commission on it. Um, so if we wanted to include that, would it be in number two in the motion, um, including the following waivers? Waiver for of waiver, I, I think this one was worded a little oddly anyway, waiver of required off-street parking, including the following waivers, a, a reduction of off-street parking of 39%, including a loading space for the current, for the proposed use only or something like that? Would that be the way we would word the condition?
I would use, uh, modifications to the waiver, because that is technically what it should be. It's not a waiver, it's a modification.
Okay. Do we need to make that change for all five of the?
No, no, that's the only one, because it's specifically not.
Okay. So what is the, what, what wording do you, do you suggest for number two? Do you have?
Um, I think, I think what you said would work fine.
I don't remember what I said. Including the following waivers, a reduction.
It's a modification, you could just change waiver to modification, requested for an off-street parking requirements, um, for, um, for a reduction of 39% including loading space. Or we can reword it more like, look, you.
Let's see, sorry.
What I'm doing is I'm adding after off-street parking requirements for A and then reduction of, or, um, so we strike waiver, make it modification, all requesting.
Of.
Oh, uh, no.
I think it's a modification of required off-street parking, um, like which would be reduced by 39% and a loading space?
Yeah.
And one loading space, is that also being, that's also included in, which would be reduced by one loading, by 39% and one loading space for the proposed use only?
Yes.
I can, so.
Keeps it simple.
Yeah. Including the following waivers, a modification of required off-street parking, which would be reduced by 39% and one loading space for the proposed use only. Does that sound right? Okay. Does that sound right to you, Mr. Krasner? This was, I think, the idea that you raised.
Yeah, no, I think, I think that works. Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any other items? Would somebody like to make the motion? Anybody feel like reading? Can the chair make the motion? I can do it.
I, I can do it.
You want to do it?
I can do it. Duncan is, uh, saving, saving his.
I got nothing to say.
That's okay. All right, let me, uh, of course, I'll have to now restate what we just said.
I, uh, I wrote it down.
Oh, you typed, okay, well, then I may refer to you. All right, well, then I will make the motion. Um, I'll preface it just by saying that, before I make the motion, that, you know, I'm thankful to this applicant for working with us on this. I mean, I think this process actually went fairly smoothly, considering at the beginning there were some not insignificant concerns about the original proposal, and, and I think you sort of right-sized the building, you know, for this site. It's, it's, it's not an easy lot, it's a corner, a very long skinny corner lot, which comes with challenges, which we get, um, and, and I was really heartened by the, the resubmission after the first work session, when I think the reason why we're here tonight, um, relatively quickly is, you know, as far as these site plans go, um, is that, is that the applicant worked with us, um, and, and really listened to our concerns, um, and so, anyhow, so with that is, and so, and at this point, like I said, I don't, they're, with this final issue about the parking, I don't think there's any outstanding issues that, uh, that I see on this, and I think this will be a really great addition to that corner, um, which has, you know, obviously there have been previous ideas and proposals about that little particular intersection in town, and I think this will be a really great addition, and kind of in that stretch between some of the newer stuff that's happened to the west and to the east of there, um, to begin to have some activity here and bring some life in, um, to that, to that particular block, so. Um, with all that as a preamble, I'll go ahead and make the motion. This is in, um, let's see, the, the official title of the action is, this is site plan application, munis number 2024-0569 by, uh.
Mr. Krasner, I'm sorry, I just realized this is a public hearing, I need to open the public hearing.
Oh, yeah. I know we asked for speakers at the beginning, but.
Yeah, yeah, so this is a, this is a public hearing, I even wrote down open public hearing in my notes. Uh, always forget to do that. Uh, is there anybody here to, we'll, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing, is there anybody here to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none. Oh, yes? Okay, please come, come forward.
Glad we asked.
Is the, is your mic on?
Yeah. Press the button.
It should, there should be a green light.
It is green?
Yep, great.
Got it? Okay. Uh, my name is Charles Longer, I am homeowner at 108 South Springs, I'm about three parcels down from, uh, the proposed plan. Um, this is more just a question for clarity, I believe my neighbor is actually the one who, uh, emailed asking for other details. I'm curious, under the current configuration, what the proposed maximum occupancy is going to be for the building? Uh, I understand that it's in a kind of hybrid, uh, environment where there will be people coming and going, but obviously parking and the creep of parking down the street is a concern, uh, for many of us, and so curious what that maximum occupancy is, and also how and if that fourth floor sublet, uh, I believe fourth floor might be sublet, or there was discussion about fourth floor being sublet to, I'm sorry, basement floor, thank you, um, how those parking numbers might impact, uh, the adjoining area and parking availability, based on who's in the sublet and how many, uh, you know, people might be expected in that, in that basement area.
Mr. Holland, can you?
Sure. Uh, yeah, so, um, the way that it's been, uh, described by the applicant in, in previous work sessions is that, um, Ekenize Closet will only have about, uh, one or two staff members at a time, um, at, uh, at the office, uh, and then all of the customers are by appointment only.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so they're all just by nature will have very few people at the site at any given time. Um, as for the co-working space, uh, down below, that will be something that is, but it's rented, uh, kind of rented out.
It's actually not going to be sublet, it's going to be, um, owned and operated by Ekenize, it's basically going to be a co-working business.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's not going to be a separate.
So, okay.
But then as a co-working space, is there a predicted number of people that will be down there?
You just get back on the mic, just in case anyone's listening at home.
Uh, I, I don't have that number off the top of my head, I mean, that's generally, uh, dictated by the, um, uh, allowable uses based on, you know, the number of occupants that you can have based on the square footage and what the use is considered, I don't have that number immediately ready, but, um.
What is the square footage on the basement?
It's, it's a 4,400 square foot footprint, um, you know, probably, I don't know, a third of that's taken up, sorry, a third of that's probably taken up by, um, storage and bathrooms and non-really occupiable spaces, maybe even a little, little more because another part of that circulation as well.
Okay. Um, any other?
No, thank you, that's it. I'm grateful to see the space being developed into something that's not a bamboo lot with feral animals, et cetera.
Absolutely.
Just want to make sure that we're.
We are too.
I'm voicing the concern about the parking and as it expands down to impact our possible public services and, uh, also traffic, et cetera, as it narrows up with people on both sides of the street.
Yeah. Well, that can slow traffic, which can be a good thing, but thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, appreciate it. Uh, anybody else here to speak on this item? Okay, then I think we can close the public hearing. And Mr. Krasner?
Okay. I'll pick it back up again, and that was, oh, I'm glad we opened that and, and, you know, hearing from neighbors, I mean, I think you, you know, just for the benefit of you and your, any other neighbors you may be watching, I mean, I think you can hear in the commission that, you know, we, you know, to the extent we have any remaining concerns, it was about the parking reduction and the condition we're putting in place, if you followed it, it's, it's, the reduction's only being granted to this particular use, if a new tenant, even years from now, was to come in, um, and they sold the building, um, or new, a new owner, rather, and they sold the building and bring in a new use, they'd have to get another, a review, um, in order to get the reduction renewed, so there'd be another set of eyes in City Hall looking at that to make sure that a new use would, would be able to work with the, with the reduced parking, so, um, so in that sense, it is looking out for the neighborhood and not having, right, creep of commercial parking down, further down the street, so, um, okay, so, um, let's see here, I was, I think I was at the title here, so this is in, again, action for site plan application, munis 2024-0569 by Coray Boskert, agent for the owner, redevelopment, for redevelopment of approximately 0.35 acres, uh, 15,334 square feet of land located, uh, at 821 West Broad Street, RPC number 52-206-040 of the Falls Church Real Property Records, Zone B1, limited business and R1A low-density residential, to demolish, uh, the existing doctor's office and develop a new, uh, location for the Ekenize Closet showroom and offices. Uh, whereas the planning commission finds approval of the site plan and related waivers and modifications meets all applicable requirements of Division 7 Site Plans, Chapter 48-1137, and whereas the requested waivers and modifications would not be substantially detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the community, and whereas the proposed project includes the demolition of a vacant medical office building to construct a new Ekenize Closets showroom, uh, which will allow a local business to expand, uh, along the city's commercial corridor. And now therefore, I move that the planning commission approve site plan application number 2024-0569 to permit the construction of a new Ekenize Closet showroom, uh, with the following waivers and modifications. Um, first one is the waiver of the perimeter parking lot landscaping adjacent to abutting, the abutting property, properties along the eastern boundary. I'll save the parking for last, I'll come back to that. Waiver of the rear yard setback requirement when adjoining the R District, uh, in 41-1101, uh, waiver of the requirement for no vehicular entrance within 100 feet, um, of, in our district, uh, which is in Section 48-938, and waiver of the interior parking lot landscaping requirements in Section 48-1182, and all of these waivers, as staff said, are really modifications in lieu of, um, or in favor of what's shown on the, on the site plan. Um, and then last but not least, uh, we are also, uh, moving to approve a wa, a modification of the required off-street parking, um, to allow a reduction of 39%, including a loading space, um, which is found in Section 48-1004, Table 3, um, subject to the following condition, and where is that language that we said? Do you have it?
I think that we, we added just, I think we just added for the proposed use only.
For this, yeah, subject to the condition that the, the modification for the parking reduction is for this use only, and any change in, uh, occupancy would require a, a renewal of the, uh, a reaffirmation or renewal of the modification.
Okay.
That's, that's the motion.
Great, is there a second?
Second.
All right.
Oh, I'm sorry, wait, there was another little bit at the end, I think I missed.
I was.
Um, it's also, I'm sorry, uh, also contingent upon the applicant resubmitting an updated final site plan that addresses the minor technical comments as noted in the attached staff comment table in lines 17 to 27, to be reviewed and administratively approved by the planning director and public works director. Those are the technical cleanup items, so it's also conditioned on, on that.
I still second.
Okay. All right, great.
Could I make a comment before I?
Just a quick comment before we.
On the motion.
Yeah, just a quick comment before we take the vote. I look forward to, uh, voting for this. Um, Ekenize is an example of a, um, business that's been very successful and a very welcome addition member to the community, uh, on their location at Park Avenue, so, uh, I think this will enhance, uh, Broad Street, and so for those reasons, I look forward to voting for this.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens, I agree.
Oh, I, I agree with that. All I wanted to ask is that the applicant and our interested citizen not leave tonight without exchanging emails to make sure that the process of, uh, getting started on this and constructing it and so forth, uh, be one that includes close collaboration and content, constant contact about, you know, what's happening. You've got neighbors, martial neighbors to the east and residential neighbors to the south, and a religious institution on the other side of the street, and although it's a small lot, it's going to be, uh, as usual, a disruptive construction scene for some time, those of us who live just down the street from Founders Row 1 and 2 know that all too well. It's worth it in the end, but, you know, it would be helpful if you would have regular, uh, Zoom meetings, Teams meetings with the neighbors who are interested in the latest on what's going on with the construction process. Thanks.
Good suggestion, Mr. Duncan. Any other discussion of the motion? Mr. Trainer, can you, um, update that motion from the tape for the, for the records?
Yeah, we've got it written down.
Okay. Okay. And I think we can, um, do a roll call vote?
Okay. Mr. Polinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Kravinski?
Yes.
And Chair Coman?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes.
Great. Thank you so much, we're really, all looking forward to seeing this.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so I think our next action item is the, um, annual report. Uh, Mr. Fuller, do you want to introduce this or toss it to Mr. Trainer?
Uh, Mr. Trainer's going to handle this item, thank you.
Great.
Sure, so, um, yep, this item is action on the planning commission's 2024 annual report to the city council. Um, the planning commission has had a couple of previous meetings, uh, looking at this, and, um, decided to withhold action until, um, the commission held its annual advance, which was done on March 26th, um, where recommendations were made to city council, uh, for priorities, uh, to focus on for the council's next, uh, work plan, as well as give direction to staff, um, to update for, um, um, the, the planning commission's priorities for 2025 and, uh, 2026 as well, and so those, um, updates have been made to the report, um, on the final page. If I can find the, uh, got it dragged down there. And they've been, uh, you know, categorized by, um, kind of general buckets, so in the 2025 Planning Division, uh, work plan updates, um, based on the priorities that the planning commission, um, identified it. It's advanced, we had, um, items under a comprehensive plan, chapter updates, transportation planning, and environmental sustainability, and zoning ordinance review and cleanup, and then, uh, recommendations for the next council work plan, which is 2026 to 2027, included, um, also items under comprehensive plan and small area plan updates, and zoning ordinance review and cleanup. And so those, uh, those are the updates.
Great, thank you, Mr. Trainer, thank you for drafting this and for, for updating it based on our discussion at the advance. Um, this looked good to me, any feedback on this list? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. Great reading, very good work by all my colleagues up here to do many important things for the city. Could you go to page seven of 17, just a couple of little typographical things caught my eye?
Seven, sorry?
Seven, I think, I think it's seven of 17. Uh, Founders Row is the.
Well, if it was in a motion.
Ah, there we go, there we go, there we go. So Founders Row, uh, is rendered with an apostrophe once and without the other times, I think it's without an apostrophe, and this is one of my little bugaboos.
You mean in the title?
Yes, Founders Road 2, Site Plan Amendment for Public Art, just needs to be.
Oh, okay.
Founders Road.
No apostrophe.
And a little down below there, uh, the Arts and Humanities Council is acronymed as, I think, ACC once, yeah, down there at the bottom of the screen that shows now, and that should be AHC, I guess, right?
We may have missed that in the original motion if you're sort of copy pasting them. I think this is like a record of the motion that we passed, so we may have missed, I mean, not, I guess you could change it, but.
Yeah, I mean, I.
You can go back and, and double check that.
Yeah, you have. Yeah, you have the administrative authority to correct typos.
It's two lines down from where you're highlighting this.
Yeah, it's two lines down.
Oh, here.
Yeah.
There you go, AHC, right.
AAC.
And, uh.
Or AHC.
And then just back, step back from that paragraph for a second and just read it. And does it make sense, actually? Founders Plaza Art Installation, a public review process was held, included and engaged the Arts and Humanities Council and the A B to develop as well as members of the community. We're not developing members of the community, I think, somewhere in there.
It looks like it got a little garbled.
The members of the community need to be after the Architectural Advisory Board, all of whom developed. I don't know what develop is even doing in there. All, all of their work resulted in a recommend, anyway. That sentence just doesn't quite hang together to my eye. So if you have the administrative authority to tinker with language for clarity, which is all I'm asking.
Question is, is that the wording on?
Yeah.
You're, uh, you're at Microsoft.
Yeah, was this the wording that, in the item that we voted on, or?
It's possible, yeah.
Quite possible.
Would you double check if it was?
We could double check, but yeah, generally I, uh, copy and pasted from.
Yeah.
improved language, but I can double, double check.
I author, on behalf of my eighth grade English teacher, I authorize you to make changes for clarity. That's all I had, thank you.
Okay.
All right, any other comments? Mr. Kravinsky?
Uh, just one comment on the recommendations on page sixteen. Uh, so when we were, uh, during our advance, we had discussed, um, I think the original title of Chapter four was Land Use and Economic Development, and we had discussed decoupling those into either separate chapters or not, not, not making them codependent, uh, as a chapter. This says land use, is this, did we change the chapter structure to reduce it, to take off economic? Wasn't there, wasn't it originally land use and economic development?
I think it's just a shorthand for the chapter.
Is it just shorthand, or did we change the structure of the chapter?
No, it gets, it's just shorthand, yeah. So this, this does not include decoupling, but, um, if you'd like to make that amendment, I can add a, add that to the, um, recommendations of decoupling those two.
No, I'm just trying to clarify because there was some discussion about land uses not necessarily tied to economic development there. I mean, they're related.
To just economic, yeah.
Yeah, but they're related, but they're, they should be addressed separately. Um, but it sounds like.
I think it's just shorthand, that's the way I read it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have it, we'll have that discussion, but that's a pretty substantive discussion that we'll have.
Okay.
As part of the updates.
Then the other question I had on the same, uh, bullet, uh, with a preceding scoping study. So, uh, that was a part of our discussion. I appreciate you guys putting that in there, uh, that's great. Can you discuss what you're planning on the preceding scoping study? Is that going to be a contracted study? Is that going to be done in-house? Have you thought it through yet? Um, and then where do you see that study going? Do you see that study as something coming back to the Planning Commission for us to vote on the scope before you start the drafting process?
Um, we haven't talked specifically about it. I did, uh, talk with, um, uh, Emily Basemore, our, um, acting, uh, principal planner that heads up the comp planning team. And so she's aware of it and we haven't discussed the particulars of it. Um, my, uh, guess is it would be, um, a scoping study that we would build internally with staff. And then, you know, we would obviously come to the Planning Commission with the outline and discuss it further in a work session as we develop that scope and before we would, you know, do the work on it or contract out at that point.
That's how it works for community facilities, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or the, uh, on the bike plan, we had the Virginia Tech study. You know, they did that study and they informed, uh, the work that the city did.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, the, thinking about the Virginia Tech study where you could, in fact, outsource a study. Uh, probably, I think Virginia Tech was a no-cost study, is that correct?
Right, that was part of their classwork, actually.
Yeah, so there might actually be, uh, some opportunity to do some kind of academic study, uh, that might not cost the city anything or minimal cost. So, um, I, I think we just need to get a little bit more clarity before, uh, you start the drafting process, which it sounds like you're planning to do. Thanks.
Yep, any other comments?
Good luck.
Okay, yeah, so I think once we, um, approve this, my task is to go deliver our annual report to council on Monday and, um, well, spend some time on these recommendations and priorities. So if there's anything in particular anybody on the commission wants me to communicate to council on Monday, please let me know. Otherwise, uh.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt the twenty twenty-four Planning Commission annual report to City Council as drafted.
Excellent, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I think I heard Mr. Stevens first, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you very much and thank you, Mr. Trainer, uh, Mr. Fuller, for organizing the advance and, uh, for putting this report together. Really appreciate the hard work. Uh, okay, so our next action item is our minutes from our, uh, March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Any, uh, updates to these, Mr. Duncan?
The usual fine job by our clerk and general solver of all problems, Jack Trainer, on line, uh, one twelve. There's a reference to the Architecture Advisory Board, which as we all know and love is the Architectural Advisory Board, I think. And, uh, that's all for the nineteenth. If you want to bundle them together, uh, the minutes for the twenty-sixth on line fifty-seven, it's, it's not it apostrophe s. And if.
Delete the.
No one has anything else?
Hmm. Nope, any other changes?
No, I don't have anything else. I move to approve the minutes of the meetings of Wednesday, March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, and Wednesday, March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, as revised.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Um, I have Mr., okay, Mr. Kravinsky. Mr. Kravinsky on the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, did you vote? Mr. Stevens, aye? Okay, great. All right, thank you all, and thank you, Mr. Trainer, for, for lovely minutes, too. Uh, okay, so our next item is a work session item, the West Falls S E E Amendment, uh, grocery VCs. Uh, Mr. Fuller, do you want to introduce it?
Yes, I will. Um, this is a, uh, as we, uh, work session item for you tonight. Uh, this is a resolution to amend the voluntary concessions associated with the S E E, which is the special exception entitlement that was done for the West Falls Project. Um, and this is to, uh, is to do with the reduction in the minimum size of the grocery store that was originally approved under the S E. Uh, we have Henry Zhang, our project planner, uh, with West Falls as well as the acting deputy director, and so he will, um, go through this with you tonight, so.
Excellent, welcome, Mr. Zhang.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Fuller. Uh, good evening, excuse me. Uh, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. Uh, my name is Henry Zhang, I'm the Planning P O C of the West Falls Project. Uh, Mayor Beth Avadizian, who is the representative of Hoffman Associates, also join us in person here over there. Thank you, Mayor Beth. Uh, line six, uh, basically Hoffman's Associates in care of West Falls Developer LLC, uh, requested an amendment to the voluntary concession, specifically V C number two, uh, which was approved by the City Council on August the ninth, twenty twenty-one, as part of the project special exception entitlement, S S E E. Uh, this request is to reduce the minimum size of the grocery, um, space from thirty-nine thousand two hundred twelve feet to thirty-two thousand nine hundred twelve feet. Uh, this amendment basically has been proposed is in response to the leasing reality and also to facilitating the completion of the Phase One, uh, of the West Falls. As we all know, Phase One of the West Falls started construction in twenty twenty-two, uh, except for the senior building on D one parcel, the entire Phase One is expected to be complete by this summer. Uh, we have attachment number one, that's the staff report to the, uh, City Council. The City Council, uh, reviewed this case on their work session on April seventh, and then, uh, further, uh, support the amendment and then, uh, referred to the Planning Commission on their fourteenth regular meeting. Um, the Planning Commission is requested to hold a work session under requested amendment, uh, in advance of writing a recommendation to council at Planning Commission's May seventh, uh, public hearing. Um, this amendment is very limited in the scope, uh, to those language as amended, uh, in the, in the, uh, V C number two. The rest of the approval, including entire S E E and also S E S P, which is the site plan, will remain, uh, governing and in full force and effect. Uh, staff recommend that Planning Commission review the proposed changes to the V C number two, uh, and provide feedback. And also, uh, recommending that the item be scheduled for public hearing and the final consideration by the Planning Commission on May seventh, twenty twenty-five. Uh, this concludes my presentation, I'm available to answer questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Zhang. Um, any questions? Feedback, Mr. Polinsky?
Uh, yeah, thank you, I had one, uh, question. I don't think I under, I don't think I'm quite understanding. You said they wanted to do the reduction of the square footage, um, because of the realities of the build-out. I was like, I'm not quite understanding exactly what the challenge.
Fresh markets requirement.
It's fresh markets request?
Would you please, uh, put, put the attachment?
Yeah, so it was.
Actually, yeah, attachment, um, number, uh, number four, please. Uh, there's a story which I'll need to tell. Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll take it for a step. Basically, when they're drafting this V C approval back in twenty twenty-one, they already have somebody, some grocery store in their mind. And, uh, but later on, that grocer dropped out. And then now they're, they're listed to a different grocer.
Right.
And then this different, the new grocer will not be able to take that many of the, uh, floor area, if, if you can see on this exhibit. Uh, this one on the right, lower right-hand side, uh, that basically, basically hatched a space, that original grocery space.
Right.
Uh, yeah, go to the next exhibit. Just, yeah. It, it's the following one, just scroll down, please.
There's another, yeah, another picture.
Yeah, keep going. Yeah, right now, this is the new grocer, already been listed there.
So, basic, basically they added A one one oh five as a separate space and condensed down the.
That's the surplus because.
A one one oh five is the surplus from what the grocer wanted?
Exactly.
Okay.
Because of the V C have a minimum square footage the grocer had to take, I mean, previously. And now because the changes is about sixty percent, sixteen percent. So they had to revise the V C in order to let this happen.
Yep.
As a result of that, yes, there is additional, uh, sixty-three, uh, hundred square feet will be available. And, uh, this will provide, uh, additional, you know, opportunity for the different tenants there, which will create additional tax revenue for the city. So I think, uh, during the two meeting with the City Council, they didn't, uh, ask, they didn't have any specific comments on the amendment per se, but, uh, they did ask some general question and, uh, Mayor Beth was there to answer the question, yes.
Yeah, I think my, my only concern here with this is it's competing with a forty-five, fifty-thousand-foot giant across the street. It's got a sixty-thousand-foot square foot Harris teeter. My worry would be, I'm sure they've done the business case on this and said they can make it work with a reduced square footage or want. They reduce square footage, but I don't want to have, I would be worried about having to go back and replace them because it was too small to be effective. So as long as staff feels like that they can make it work at thirty thousand, um, even if I know they asked for, they, that's a request from the grocer, the concern would be that they lose out on Whole Foods down the street, bigger, more shiny stores, and then we're having this conversation again in three or four years, five years, when they need to get replaced. So, uh, if staff feels it's okay and they're, you're confident in the, the reduction and them still being a successful store, I know Trader Joe's make it in twelve to fifteen thousand square feet, right? Like, it's not to say they can't do it.
Right.
But just a smaller store competing against bigger stores that are very close, uh, would be my, my primary concern, that the smaller they get, the less likely they're to be successful, and then we have to have this conversation again in a couple of years.
It's still pretty big.
Yeah.
Yeah, your point taken, Mr. Duncan?
Uh, I hear what you're saying, Mr. Polinsky. Um, I listened to the council's, uh, discussions and questions, and you characterized that correctly, Mr. Zhang and I, end up where they ended up too, being supportive of this for the economic reasons, if nothing else. Mary Beth, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but since you're here and it's not midnight, because we're not going to keep you that late, like the council did. Um, I just wonder, could you speak a little bit to, you know, the business plan from your perspective for a grocery of this size and type, um, as it relates to the competitors, as it relates to the people who live in the community? Where do you think most of the business is going to come from, first? And the second question I have, if I can just put them both out there, is this A one one oh five space, do you all foresee that in your, uh, rental plan as, you know, like all the other openings that you've been filling with longer, hopefully longer-term users? Or is it more of a kind of a pop-up type space just because of where and how it lies on the project?
Oh, no, it's not planned to be a pop-up at all.
Turn your, turn, turn.
Is, the green light is on, is it?
There we go.
Maybe I wasn't speaking into it properly?
That's good.
Thank you.
We can hear you.
And thank you, by the way, for the opportunity to come and speak with you. I'm Mary Beth Avadizian with Hoffman and Associates. Um, first, your first question about the viability of this, uh, this grocer. Um, you know, you all know, of course, you have a lot of grocers in a fairly tight proximity to one another. Um, so finding this tenant was no small feat. Um, and certainly they, there, it was competition for them. There were only a couple others in the market at the time. I think Sprouts was another one that was looking about the same time. Um, and given the size of this, I mean, obviously, we would have loved to have had a tenant that would take the full forty thousand square foot footprint. Makes our lives a little bit easier. Um, so I wouldn't have to necessarily be standing here tonight, not that I, not to mind your, your, your presence, of course. Um, but this particular tenant who focuses on, uh, a lot of prepared food, so they have a pretty heavy, um, kitchen, uh, in the back, in the back of house. We actually were trying to encourage them to take the entire footprint. And they said, actually, we don't need it and we don't want it. And if you want us to take it, we'll take it, but we're not going to pay more rent for it.
Yeah.
We can make our, our program work in this amount of square foot, square feet. Um, and so if you want us to take the rest, fine, we're going to pay this amount, X number of dollars, and, and no more.
Yeah.
So we're like, well, as a business person, it didn't make sense for us to just let that sixty-three hundred square feet is, is quite a good-sized retail space to let it go fallow. So we said, fine, you keep your consolidated and we'll try to find a tenant for the rest of this. Of course, in reading the V C, it, it kind of hamstrings us on the type of tenant that we can put in there because it very much says, if you don't do the entire square footage as a grocer, that generates a minimum of four hundred dollars a square feet, which is, is going to be easy for this grocer to hit, according to them, the feedback that they've given me. Um, they said, uh, then I have to replace that leftover space with a non-service, which means it can't be hairstyle, a nail salon, a gym, or this or that. It has to be a non-service, which is something like, uh, some. It has to be non-service, which is something like a, somebody that sells goods or restaurants. Um, it's, we, we looked at furniture stores and showed it a couple. They, they sell goods. That, that would generate um, um, sales tax, which is something the city wants. Um, that we had one party, maybe two, just wasn't the right fit for them. They just didn't, they didn't, they didn't feel it was the right location. Um, and the more we looked and, and then, of course, we got this grocer and they have their own restrictions on the types of tenants they want in close proximity to them. It leaves us with a fairly limited number of options. So the fact that it, the four hundred dollars a square foot generating sales became a problem. The fact that it had to be non-service became even more of a problem. So that's why I'm here. When we, when we did the math, we're like, they're going to crush it with their sales, according to them. So if I changing that four hundred dollars to a bigger per square foot number, I can make the square feet be long, you multiply those two numbers out, you get the same amount of, of, of tax revenue to the city. That leaves this extra space to be rented to somebody else if they're not hamstrung by those additional non-service and has to be generating four hundred dollars a square foot in taxable goods and service, goods, if you will. Um, then it opens my options up considerably to what they are now. Um, so that's, that's why we're here, is to amend that. If we did that, you would be at par with the way that the VC reads right now in terms of the amount of tax revenue the city will get. You'll get the revenue and more, we expect, from the grocer on its own. Then if I remove all those extra encumbrances on A one one oh five, I can lease it to something else. It probably a service use that will work within the, within the confines of, of our other leasing restrictions that the grocer has on us. But it's not going to be pop-up. We actually are this close to having a signed LOI with a ten-year tenant for that space. I can't really, it is, it is a service use. But still, the city will get, they'll get the revenue because we'll get rent from that tenant space as opposed to zero, given what our other options are. We'll get rent from that space. And if you know how the tax assessor works, we have to present an income and expense statement to the tax assessor. They put a cap value on that and say, okay, here's your assessed value based upon that. The more income that we generate from the space, the higher the assessed value will be. And that space alone, with a conservative rent assumption, I think I put in my letter of justification, could generate just normal property tax revenue of somewhere in the thirty to forty thousand dollar range, we think. Um, versus zero if I can't lease it to anybody and the, and the grocer didn't want to take it.
And we get another business in the city.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for sharing.
Really helpful context.
Thank you for sharing your expertise.
Yeah.
See, a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Krasny.
Um, you know, I'm looking at the Fresh Market. I don't know them that well, but I guess they have one right down the road in Vienna. They got one in Churlington. They got a couple in Maryland and then beyond. I mean, their other locations are all pretty suburban, you know, they have large parking lots and the footprints look pretty big. I'm just curious, like, is this a different model for them? I mean, are they trying to, like, you know, why did they balk at the, the extra square footage? Um, you know, it seems like their other store just down the road is similar. The Churlington one certainly looks, maybe the Vienna one is in an older building that they took over from something, but I don't know. I just don't know a lot about the chain. It also looks kind of like a conventional supermarket. And I'm curious about like sort of what their angle is, like what, you know, how, since they will be next to a giant and surrounded by supermarkets, we're like the grocery city now. I, I, I actually, I'm always astounded how that can, you know, they can all, you know, get their piece of the pie, but um, what's their angle? I don't know a lot about them and why they balked at six thousand square feet. Seems like a relatively small difference compared to some of their other stores that they have in the region.
Hard for me to speak on their behalf, but they insisted this was more their prototype than the other that you've described. My only experience, I live in, excuse me for, I live on the other side of the river. I know that's hard to swallow some people, but I, I've been in their store in Rockville.
Yeah, I was looking at that one too.
In Congressional Shopping Center.
Yeah.
And I know they, I've, I've lived in that county long enough to know that center's gone through many iterations of tenants and, and renovations. And they took that space over from a larger tenant. And you walk in the space and it doesn't feel cohesive. It's like too spread out. And maybe they've done focus groups and realized, you know, something that's more compact and you feel the energy a little bit better as you're walking through the store. Um, their produce is beautiful. They have, that's all about, that's what they're all about is fresh. Their name in their, in their, in their logo is really what they're all about. Their produce is beautiful. As I said, they do a lot of prepared foods. I've had some of the baked goods that um, that they uh sell that are just out of this world. Um, put any bakery to shame. Um, so I, you know, I, I think that's how they compete is just on keeping things in a more compact footprint, so they're not overpaying for their space. It's the bigger space they take too, they're going to have to pay more of their CAM and taxes, a bigger per radish share of the operating expenses for the property. That's how they, it's not just the rent, but it's the CAM and tax piece that gets passed through to tenants. So, I mean, I, again, I can't really speak on their behalf, but I have to imagine from seeing their other stores that this is just a prototype that works better for them. They have said that they're more accustomed to doing the big box retail, you know, with big parking lot out in front. So this is kind of a new, this is their first type of, of vertical construction project that they've gone into. Um, and I, you know, maybe they were just trying to be cognizant of, you know, the fewer feet that they encumber, the less uh they're going to have above and below conflicts with, with trying to do their construction and whatnot.
Okay. Um, a question for staff maybe, and I don't recall how we arrived at the number. I mean, it's a very specific number in the, in the VC's thirty-nine, two. You know, it's so specific. I forget how we backed into that number. Um, I'm sure we reviewed that. And so I'm just wondering, you know, for the future, you know, I think, again, when we're so prescriptive, um, we find ourselves in this type of situation, right? Where we say you must have thirty-nine thousand two hundred square feet. If you have thirty-nine thousand one hundred and ninety-eight, you're, you know, you got to come back in. Um, I, I, I'm sure it was some financial calculation that we did based, based on projected tax revenue, but I just don't remember. I don't know if anyone's staff or maybe.
Did it not come from the original grocer?
May, may.
Yeah, maybe the applicant knows. Yeah, I just don't remember how we arrived at that, that number.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, please.
Um, I, I don't want to take words out of your mouth.
Maybe you know better. I just don't remember how we.
But I presented the numbers to them and then I'm sure they vetted them. I can tell you my rationale for coming up with those numbers. And I, I know Henry probably double-checked them to get a comfort level. But first thing I did was I looked at, we had the original grocer that you saw on the crosshatch was actually a lease. It wasn't just a prospect, but we had a lease and that tenant had a lease of forty thousand one hundred square feet. And, and that lease was in hand before that VC was negotiated. So I'm a math kind of person. I looked at what's that thirty-nine thousand two hundred divided by forty thousand one hundred? There was a two percent difference, two percent variance, right? Ninety-eight percent of the other, other number. And that's a kind of a common um, uh factor to put in because if you put something in a lease, the lease always says a tenant has a right to come back and re-measure the space once they get in it and they get, you know, take possession. And usually you're not off by much, but a two percent slush factor makes a lot of sense when you're doing something like that. So I had to think like, this was all negotiated before my time on this project. But as I was thinking through this, I thought, that sort of makes sense that they built in the two percent slush factor. So the thirty-nine thousand two hundred is about two percent less than what was actually the lease.
Hmm, I see.
Using that same logic, I applied it to the Fresh Market lease. It's thirty-three thousand five hundred and something. I took two percent off of that, rounded it off, and it came to thirty-two thousand nine hundred. That was, it was just math. It was nothing really sophisticated about it. I just thought we ought to have the same kind of a slush factor built into that so that if they go and measure their space after they take possession of it and say, oh, you're off by a bit, the, the mizing wall was thicker or thinner or in the wrong place or whatever, that that, there would be some of that built in.
Yeah. Okay. I appreciate that background. That's very helpful.
Yeah, if I may, in addition to the lease-driven math calculation, they also uh take, took into the consideration of the per square feet, uh, you know, revenue generated. So that's the combined of both of them. They settle on that number and the range. Yeah, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Zhang. Uh, Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, just one question. So does that space, that A one one oh five, does that already, does it already have a zone? Uh, applied to it? In other words, it doesn't have to go through zoning?
Uh, we don't need to go through the zoning again.
Right.
Uh, I think the, logistically, we just need to assign a parcel number. I mean, different tax ID, and then they can just carry it on because the previous approval cover everything. They'll not change any use. The other restriction in the SCE, for example, we have a prohibited use. We have a primary retail and secondary retail. This all applied to here. So that will be implemented by the zoning administrator at the time they're applying for the, for the COs, all for the permit.
Um, like, um, Commissioner Duncan, I also watched and listened to the council discussion on this and, you know, I think this kind of makes sense to me. This is probably a situation where um, being flexible kind of works to everybody's benefits, so as it stands right now, I'm okay with this.
Okay. Mr. Krasny, no comment?
I'm, I'm good with it. I, I'm looking at the uh, uh, Fresh Market website. It, it looks like they're, they have a very different feel than the giant across the street. It's sort of specialty goods. It's not staples such as paper towels and things like that. So it's prepared goods, specialty goods. So it does look like it's going, it's a very different business model than people who are going to the giant. Uh, so that's good to hear.
All right, great. I mean, it seems like a win-win to me too. And maybe a no-brainer for the city to get some extra tax revenue and another tenant. Um, so any other questions um during this work session? No, it's a work session, so I think they're going to come back to us. So I think, we'll see this again. You said on the seventh, Mr. Zhang, is that right?
Yes, the seventh.
Okay.
And then the council uh scheduled for the.
For the twelfth.
Yes.
Okay.
So you think you'll have that letter of intent or lease written by then?
A one one oh five, I'm not sure. If I have a letter of intent, I still wouldn't be able to disclose who the tenant is until I get to lease. Once I have a lease, you'll all know about it. May I, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Before we.
Yes, please.
Would you like me to come back and speak at the hearing, the planning commission hearing, or would you, I'm not sure if this was, I, I'm happy to join remotely in case some questions come from any of the public.
Remote would be fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I'll do that.
Since you are across the river.
I'm sorry?
You are across the river.
Yes, that's, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, no, you have the full contingent tonight. I think Sharon may be with us. She's the only commissioner not here, so if she has any questions that you could answer, but I think a remote context would be fine.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in person tonight though.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. I think that's all then. Uh, thank you, Mr. Zhang.
Thank you.
Really appreciate the work on this. Looking forward to seeing all of um this pro, the first phase one complete. Okay, so I think we can move on to our information items. We're running ahead of schedule tonight. Uh, any planning commissioner reports? It's been a while since we've been together. Anything new in anybody's world, in anybody's planning commission world?
Just general.
Yeah. How was your spring break? Any updates? No? No? Okay. Uh, director's report, uh, Mr. Fuller. I think maybe this is where we might spend some of our time, actually.
There you go. All right. So um, before I get into the um specifics of the director's report, so our schedule. Um, as we just stated, we have the public hearing on May seventh for the West Falls SCE amendment that we just discussed. And then the affordable living policy, we'll have a work session on that, that evening as well. Um, then at this point, um, we, we have a lack of agenda items coming up, um, but uh, we'll, we'll see. So we're not, we don't have anything specifically scheduled until June. And so we'll, we'll, we'll see what comes along. I know there's um, a couple of things we're looking at um, on the upcoming schedule, but I know the Maple and Anandale special exception um is going back to a work session with the council on May nineteenth. At that point, um, there's potential for that to be um, come to the planning commission at a work session as well. But we're waiting for the council to get it first and then um, see what their disposition is of it. In terms of um, that's the schedule. And looking at um, the director's report. We did send you some information on the plan forward that's going on in Fairfax County. Um, that's been underway. They're looking at a number of elements, land use, parks, recreation, transportation, environmental, human services now. They'll be going to a phase two in the first quarter of next year. Looking at housing, the ongoing development, heritage resources revitalization, uh, visual and performing arts. Our, our comprehensive planning staff is uh monitoring this and, and participating um, uh, as well. And so um, this is something that's on our radar. In terms of accessory dwelling unit uh update, uh, we had approval. Um, Jack did a great job on that and I know he got a lot of kudos and congratulations on that, so we appreciate all his hard work. And on April fourteenth, um, that was approved by council, so he's doing some follow-up um, post-work on that. And so um, you know, that's, that's been completed. Um, the other item was the state legislation uh in regards to the Senate Bill uh nine seventy-four. And that's a new law that removes the governing body and planning commission um, in terms of site plan and subdivision approvals and authority. And that uh, a designated agent um would do an administrative review of those plans um, starting in um, July one of this year. Um, I have a, I've met with, well, I've scheduled a meeting with the city attorney for Monday to initiate discussions on that. Um, and then the council will be looking at it on May twenty-seventh, so I'll be reporting to you prior to that once I get some more definitive um, um, in terms of the requirements and options that, that we may have to address that. We'll be looking at the city charter, looking at the state code. Um, and then I'll be working with the city attorney, kind of sort through this, and then we'll be reporting back to you in May with, with specific details. But at this point, I haven't had those discussions and so I'm still also kind of learning about, you know, what the options will be as well. So I, I look, you know, forward to reporting to you in May on that, so. I'll open it up.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fuller. I'm sure we have some questions about that. You, you said that you will be um, looking at other smaller local jurisdictions. You, you mentioned um, City Fairfax.
Yeah, that was, that was, um, yeah, we'll be looking at kind of around the state who is, who had planning commissions.
It's similar.
Doing this and in the context of, of that, it was more, more on the, on the compensation side of.
Oh, that's right, that's right. I'm sorry.
But anyway, but that's something that, no, that's something that we're going to do. Um, when we make those calls, we're going to ask about both. So in terms of, you know, kind of what, what are the designated agents and administratively, how do they process things regarding site plans and subdivisions?
Since you mentioned the compensation thing, maybe I'll just mention really quick for the rest of the commissioners that we've discussed our, our sort of flat, apparently for thirty years, uh, one hundred dollar.
Over thirty years.
Compensation. And so the, the council is in the process of sort of reviewing their compensation, so um, Mr. Fuller drafted a letter on my behalf to send to city council to request that they also look at ours. Um, so just so you all are aware, we'll send that probably tomorrow. Um, I'll take a look at it and just reply to you.
Sure, I sent it to you in a word document, so feel free to make the edits and.
That sounds good.
Yeah, I'll take, I'll take care of that.
Yeah, so uh, just, that's a different topic, but just an FYI. Um, but back to the, the new state um, code. Any comments, discussion, thoughts on that?
And I'll just say, I, I had heard something about this. I get like updates, you know, through, like the Virginia planners, folks were kind of tracking some of the bills this year. And this came out of, uh, I think the.
Glenn Allen?
Yeah, from Henrico, the senator from.
Falkenburg.
Yeah. Um, and I think this is a, I think the genesis of it was, again, the idea of streamlining the process. Um, in some ways it brings, you know, while, you know, it's sort of like a loss for us, you know, as a commission personally. You know, as far as, you know, losing an ability to have some impact on that process. I mean, it does bring us into line with what most jurisdictions around the state do. I mean, of all sizes, um, you know, certainly the medium and larger have always done it that way. Um, you know, site plan's been a, you know, been done at the staff level as an administrative process, so. You know, and then we all, I guess at some level, you know, there are certain site plans, I guess, where we do, I think it, we add value there. site plans, I guess, where we do, I think we add value there, so have been certainly others, though, where, you know, it's, you know, it's something that probably could have been handled at the staff level. But I had heard this was kind of percolating through, but I think that's the genesis of it. Why they picked the number 5,000, you know, as a population size, like cutoff, maybe, you know, I don't, that I don't know. And if that went, I got to double check if that, like, went through, you know, any kind of changes throughout the course of the bill. I don't think it did, though. So, you know, we've been, we've been above 5,000 for a long time, so it's not like this is something that we, you know, we used to qualify or not. They just, they specifically took out Planning Commission and governing body. There are certain, I think, towns, counties, some small counties as well, where the governing body was approving site plans, and some of the more, you know, really rural parts of the state, like where a whole county only has, you know, 10,000 or 20,000 people, they were, you know, the governing body was voting on site plans, and so they're, they're losing that ability, too. So that was the genesis of it, to streamline things and avoid the need for, you know, additional meetings and public hearings and stuff. That's what I had been told.
Yeah.
So I'd heard it was kind of percolating through and, but kind of had lost track of it, so yeah, I guess it did pass and got signed, so, yeah, well, our meetings may be shorter, I don't know, some fewer meetings.
Your items, Mr. Kravinsky?
Yeah, I, oh, sorry, I was on the Van Falkenberg's Facebook page, so he posted, "My bill to help streamline housing permitting passed out of Committee 13 to 2 today," that was back in January. "This will help get housing online faster and therefore bring down cost." And so that, it really is a streamlining issue and the whole idea that if we streamline the permitting process, you know, you get more housing and you bring down costs, so it's part, I think it's part of a fairly major national trend to sort of streamline the process. Whether this will actually do that or not, I don't know, but that was the...
Staff can be just as, you know, difficult and slow as we are, so. If they think it's going to be just a picnic with staff, I don't know, then, yeah, no, I think that's right.
One thing, yeah, I guess, as I was thinking about this, I mean, you take the econize item that we just had, we had five waivers or four waivers and a modification. So presumably, under this new legislation, that would be all done as a ministerial staff effort.
Administrative.
Yeah, and it just strikes me that it's not, I mean, if the vision is, you just, you know, you look at the statute and it's just a matter of, you know, implementing it, that, that there isn't, and, you know...
Discretion.
Areas, yeah, where judgment kind of has to be applied, that's the note of caution, I guess, I would, I would share. One, one person I contacted who had reached out to the City of Alexandria, had gotten some feedback that they think, you know, this isn't verified, it's kind of secondhand hearsay, but the thought from Alexandria is that their city charter kind of overrides this, this legislation, and so that it, presumption is it wouldn't apply there, but, you know...
The city?
Yeah, it obviously needs to be verified, but I thought that was an interesting, since we aren't, you know, necessarily that much different from Alexandria. So I think your meeting on Monday with city attorney will be hopefully clarifying questions like that.
Yes, we've, we've specifically, in our pre-conversations, talked about the charter and versus the state code, so that'll be the main initial determinations as to where this falls, and then from there, we'll look at alternatives.
Sorry, can you scroll back up just a second on the, just the paragraph before the one that's shown? This, this law excludes the Planning Commission as being the designated agent, meaning the Planning Commission would not be responsible or could not be responsible for specifically approving a site plan. Does it say anything in the law about the Planning Commission contributing to the review of a site plan? I understand what the state senator's goal was, but like, does it specifically exclude a process whereby the Planning Commission reviewed prior to the designated agent being the one who made the decision?
That's one of my specific questions and one of the research we'll be doing, because the thought was, is maybe there could be, if we were to want to do it, a committee version that might be a clearinghouse with recommendations to staff, and so that may be an alternative, and so I'm curious with the city attorney, that's one of my questions on my list, whether that becomes an alternative to consider. So I think that, that, you know, is along the lines of what your question is.
Yeah, I would also be, I'm just also curious, what do you think about this?
I mean, at this point, I really do want to sit down with the city attorney. I think, I think we have some strong language in the charter, especially on subdivision side. Site plan is, is different than the definition at the state level versus how we handle things, and special exceptions is another one, where the definition of those at the state level versus local, it's just a totally different nomenclature in a way, looking at the definition. So I'm going to be, yeah, I have a lot of the same questions, and so I think, once I work through with the city attorney, she'll, she'll be able to kind of lay the foundation of where we are and what our alternatives are. So at this point, you know, obviously, the designated agent for the ministerial action cannot be the city council and cannot be the Planning Commission. If there's an advisory role or, you know, the other thing is, is, you know, you've got a 5,000 population cap on it, and so, I mean, you know, if, if we feel strongly about it, next General Assembly session, we say up that to 25,000 or whatever. And so, you know, I think there's a number of alternatives to look at on this, and I'm, I've got a list of what I want to explore with the city attorney, and then I'll report those to you, and then we'll have that discussion ourselves, and then, you know, well, I'll get guidance from you on, you know, what, what you're looking for that we can carve out of this. And so I think, I think we're all together on this, actually, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Duncan?
Yeah, my impression was that the impetus behind Van Falkenberg's legislation was, as you say, to promote housing, which is commendable goal, and I think, talking to Delegate Simon, that was his impression of why he supported it, and, and I don't think they really had it in their mind that this would pretty substantially change if it's just goes through as explained here, you know, what the Planning Commission does. So don't, don't discount the possibility. It reminds me a little bit of a few years ago, you know, some of the bigger develop, from the other side of the development spectrum, some of the big developers wanted to put a Walmart in, you know, some rural county, and were coming up with all sorts of hurdles and opposition and so forth, basically did an in-run around the local government and said that, you know, set up conditions which enabled these big developers to put in their big developments, and it was so extreme that it basically prevented conversations even at the local level about, you know, where the road comes out and how many traffic lights we might need. It was just wholly unworkable to the point that it froze all development, and the legislature had to backtrack and find ways to enable us and others to do what it is that we do. So, yeah, I look forward to hearing what, you know, they do so much so quickly in Richmond during session.
They do.
It's just really, I mean, the fundamental reform that's needed is legislature that has a little, I mean, even Tennessee, where I grew up, you know, their legislative session is just about to wrap up, you know, and it's May. And, you know, in Virginia, we try to do all these complex and complicated things in like 30 days.
Ridiculous.
It's nuts.
Especially land use. Every time the state tries to, you know, they get involved in land use and zoning, it never works our ride. There's so many unintended consequences, and then they're back the next year fixing stuff and undoing stuff. So, yeah, that's true. I mean, I'm sure the last word on this hasn't been written, and, you know, I don't know how many, you know, if they bothered to actually study how many cities and towns it affects, probably a large number.
But the case that we would have to make, I mean, having been on council and seen what contributions the Planning Commission makes to the process, I mean, city council is simply not able to go into the sort of detail that the Planning Commission does. They've just got too much else to do.
Right.
And, you know, depriving the council of that benefit, and generally, it is a benefit, even if, you know, some disagreements arise during the process, it produces a better product. But, you know, depriving that, that means of input from the public and more heads, you know, do make a better product, I think, in the end, we figured it out here, I think, how to, you know, take tough issues and work through them with a good process and allow plenty of input and, and come to a resolution thereon in some reasonable amount of time, like we did for the accessory dwellings project. And it would be a shame to lose that, and if we did lose it, and then, yeah, my suggestion to the mayor was that you set up a five-member, what are they calling it? The designated agent would be five members who might just have happened to have had the experience as planning commissioner somewhere along the line, who would do that part of the work that the Planning Commission now does, because there's still plenty of other work for the Planning Commission to do in terms of long-term planning and all the other things that keep us here till, you know, 10:30 or 11 o'clock at night. So I don't know, it'll be interesting to see what comes of it, but...
Yeah, I...
Thanks to Gary for being, because he's seen, he's seen it all over the decades, and so he's a good person to have in this place at this time.
I spent some time trying to Google this legislation, and I will tell you that, like you mentioned it, how rushed it is, it doesn't seem like there was any debate on this thing. It doesn't seem like there were any articles, news articles about it, it just went through the system. And whether, in fact, it has the intended consequences of, you know, actually building more or reducing housing costs or something like that, I don't know. It doesn't, I'm not sure.
We'll see, yeah. Well, I, Mr. Kravinsky?
I was just going to say, too, you know, and in some jurisdictions, I mean, you know, in a 5,000 is actually a really small cap. I mean, you know, a jurisdiction with like 6,000 or 7,000 people, I mean, their staff, and we're blessed with a pretty robust staff. There are a lot of jurisdictions that don't have that, and so they rely on the Planning Commission, you know, to, to do that. They may have, you know, or they, you know, or they're farming out the consultants, so now a small city may have to farm out some of that work, you know, to, to consultants, you know, and pay for them to review the, you know, to view the site plans because they've lost the ability to work with the commission on it. So, yeah, and I think there's going to be a lot of unintended consequences for it, it's unfortunate, but, yeah, it is, these things often go like that in Richmond where they're, you know, especially on land use matters, sometimes people get, you know, it kind of gets picked up in the press and people pay attention, but other times, right, it's kind of considered like an obscure technical thing, and people are saying, okay, yeah, it sounds fine to me, yeah, it all sounds good. Yeah, streamlining, good, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
But without actually digging into what it really means.
What's surprising to me is that the legislative assistance in, let's say, the NOVA jurisdictions, I mean, they're pretty stute, you know, they follow this, and they share with each other. And this just seemed to come out of nowhere.
Under the radar, yeah, yeah. I, I mean, for my part, like, I, I support the goal of streamlining, you know, recognizing also maybe the unintended consequences, but I also really value at the same time, you know, the, the way that we're able as a commission and with the community to help sort of shape these projects that come to us, and so I don't want to lose that opportunity. One thing that I was thinking about was just like the full development process. I think, Mr. Fuller, at some point, you had, you had mentioned the idea of doing a, a sort of development review process 101 for our new commissioners, and I was just Googling on the, on the city site, and there's a, there's actually a really nice flow chart, I don't know who put it together or how old it is, on the...
Carly Aubrey.
Yeah, Carly's flow chart of all the steps in the process, and it just made me wonder, you know, I mean, we're still involved at the conceptual development plan for SEEs, right? And, or any, any special exception, so like, I, I just wonder, like, I know, I know, well, so for my part, when, when site plans come to us, there's a lot that I think there, there is, you know, in there for us to discuss, but there's also a lot of really just technical things that staff should, I'm, I'm not the person to be reviewing our stormwater calculations, right? Like, that is a staff role. And so there's a lot in site plans that, that should be managed by staff, but I think it's sort of like, what are those elements that, that still deserve some discussion with us or with the community that we're reviewing at site plan, and could we kind of firm those up at the conceptual development point in the process? That's what I'm wondering, like, is there, the things that we really care about as a commission that the community cares about, can we get those firmed up earlier in the process? So then, when it is a site plan, it's really just the more technical details, and staff can, can just ensure that it confirms to the CDP and, and the rest of our codes. So that would be my preference. I don't know about setting up a whole nother, I don't want to do a runaround. I mean, maybe we should, if it's bad legis, legislation, but, yeah, that's kind of where I want it.
I think the answer to your question is, you know, you, you do better by doing something more often, and for many years here, we, you know, we were knocking away at it, but we were not doing what we've done in the last 12 years, say. And now every project that comes to us is like, well, you know, we did the other three like this, the, the previous three grocery stores, we handled this way, and so the fourth grocery store is probably going to benefit from that experience. And, you know, we've been lucky in that regard, but that doesn't go on forever, you know, I mean, there's urges and peaks and valleys in development, and we may be heading towards a valley.
Yeah, for sure.
And then you lose, you know...
The muscle memory?
Yeah, you do. And, you know, it's a big benefit to have the staff, obviously, nothing happens without the staff, you know, bringing their expertise to it, but it helps them sometimes for us to give them cover in the community, because people can be really, you know, brutal towards the staff.
For sure.
It's like it's their fault that they're carrying out the expressed will of the elected and appointed, and that's just totally unfair.
Yeah.
And then to put them as the only agents of action in a process is, I think, not good for them either, because it gives them no, well, you know, hey, I'm just doing, you know, what the people want.
Mm-hmm.
And that's an effective response, that's why we have elections. If you don't like it, elect different people.
Right, right. Yep. Any other thoughts?
We have to stay tuned.
Yeah, well, thank you, Mr. Fuller, for, it sounds like you have a really good list of questions. You've heard our, our early takes tonight.
I guess our city attorney will be busy helping.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, I'm sure it'll be more than one meeting.
Look forward to hearing, you know...
Yeah, and then, and then we'll be not only reporting to you, but to the council the following month, so.
Yeah, they're just...
Okay. So you're having that discussion on Monday, and then I think we might hear from you on it at our next, at the May 7th meeting?
I mean, yeah, I mean, I'm happy to, I assume it'll take more than one meeting, it's a one-hour teams meeting on Monday, and then, you know, I'm happy to report out any preliminary findings, and then, you know, we're going to continue to do some research and to kind of work through what options might be. So I, I see, you know, several meetings with the city attorney before we kind of get a good picture of all the alternatives and present, but I still, you know, see presenting that to you prior to it going to council, so at one of your two meetings. So I'll, I'll basically give you an update at both, or, you know, for some reason, I mean, we've got on the schedule, on the meetings coming up, let's see.
By the way, you'll probably get a question on Monday from council on that.
Yeah, so on May, on May 7th, you know, I'll report the findings to date to you, and then if we don't have the meeting on May 21st, then, then I will, you know, specifically, you know, we can even have a meeting just to talk about this, or I can send you the latest correspondence, and you can tell me whether you would like to discuss this publicly or, or not on the 21st, because right now, we don't have any agenda items.
Okay.
So my commitment is to report to you on the 7th, and then give you more information prior to the council taking it up on the 27th of their work session, and so, so you can be informed of the alternatives that we're looking at and where this lands, so.
Okay, and in the meantime, you're also doing some research on, on what other localities or, like...
Yeah, it'll be with the other localities, and then, you know, we'll be, at the same time, we'll be asking them what their compensation is as well, so.
Yes, excellent, okay.
So we'll be asking two questions.
Okay, great. All right, well, thank you. Any other thoughts? Nope. Okay. Do you have any correspondence? Nope. Okay, and I think we are adjourned.
We will be on Sunday.
We will.
I may not be on...
Correct, yeah. All right. I think that's right. I think that's right.